All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Portsmouth Planning Commission work session today, April 2nd, 2024. Ms. Russell, would you like to get us started?
I would. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone.
No.
Good afternoon. G.
Ms. G, I should put the glasses on. This is my second Planning Commission meeting, and you are the only commissioner that I have not yet met. So I am Rhonda Russell. I am the recently appointed Director of Planning for the City of Portsmouth. So it's a pleasure to meet you.
You as well.
Madam Chair, we would like to just proceed with the agenda as presented, and I would defer to Ms. Valerie Malzone for the first two agenda items.
Perfect. Okay, so our first agenda item is UP 2321, and this is a deferral from the February Planning Commission. This is a request for a use permit to operate a shipping container chassis storage yard. We are recommending a 60-day deferral to the June 4th public hearing so that the applicant can prepare his traffic impact analysis. Our second is CBE 24-02. This is a request for a Chesapeake Bay exception to construct a detached garage within the 100-foot Resource Protection Area, or RPA buffer, at 177 Peninsula Avenue. Resource protection areas are comprised of tidal wetlands and shores, non-tidal wetlands connected and contiguous to water bodies with perennial flow, and a landward 100-foot buffer, which is further divided into a 50-foot seaward and a 50-foot landward buffer. Development within the Resource Protection Area is regulated by Chapter 9.1 of the Portsmouth City Code and the Virginia State Code. Development of an accessory structure such as a detached garage is not a permitted and exempt or an allowable land use within the RPA buffer specified in Section 9.1-10C. A Chesapeake Bay exception may be applied for to authorize an exception from the requirements of this section for approval by Planning Commission. Approval of Chesapeake Bay exception requests must be based upon the making of certain findings, the first being that the request is the minimum necessary to afford relief. This can be applicable to, but it's not limited to, the size, type, or placement of the proposed structure. The second, the exception request must not be based upon conditions that are self-created. Third, granting the exception does not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied to other property owners in the Resource Protection Area. The exception request must be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Ordinance. And lastly, if approved, reasonable and appropriate conditions must be imposed, which will prevent the request from causing a degradation of water quality. If appropriate, the Commission may request an amendment of an applicant's proposal to allow for a proposal that meets the intent of the Chesapeake Bay ordinance. The subject property at 177 Peninsula Avenue is zoned urban residential, or UR. The property is .43 acres in size and contains a 1,324-square-foot, single-family dwelling. The residence was constructed in 1920, prior to the adoption of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act and designation of Resource Protection Areas. Approximately 50% of the property is within the Resource Protection Area, and the entire property is located within the regulated AE flood zone. The subject property is surrounded to the north, south, east, and west by single-family residential properties that are also zoned UR, or urban residential. Owens Creek is located to the northeast of the subject property. The applicant is proposing to construct a 20-foot-by-25-foot detached two-car garage to the rear of the dwelling. The proposed garage will be located entirely within the 50-foot landward RPA buffer. The proposed development will result in an approximately 500-square-foot net increase in the amount of impervious surface within the RPA. No trees or shrubs are proposed to be removed for the project. A Water Quality Impact Assessment, or WQIA, is required for all land disturbances in the RPA. In the submitted WQIA, the applicant proposes to mitigate 600 square feet of land disturbance within the RPA by establishing two planting units. The quantity and species selection of the proposed plants meet the recommendations of the Riparian Buffer's Modification and Mitigation Guidance Manual for Buffer Restoration. Land disturbance mitigation associated with the proposed driveways encroachment into the 50-foot landward buffer to the front of the garage is also included in this submitted WQIA, but is not part of this exception request. A driveway into the RPA is considered an allowable land use in the RPA and can be approved Staff finds that, as proposed, the exception request for the detached two-car garage does not meet all of the review standards specified in Section 9.1-12C3. The request does not appear to be the minimum necessary to afford relief, as the zoning ordinance recommends a minimum of two off-street vehicle parking spaces for single-family dwelling uses, while the proposal provides four off-street vehicle parking spaces. Staff supports the approval with conditions of a single-car garage within the 50-foot landward buffer of the RPA. The development is located completely outside of the 50-foot seaward buffer of the RPA, and the proposed mitigation meets the recommendations of the Department of Environmental Quality. Due to the proposed development of an accessory dwelling unit within the north interior side yard of the existing dwelling, this area cannot serve as an alternative location for the proposed garage. Construction of the accessory dwelling unit as proposed is contingent upon approval of a variance by the Board of Zoning Appeals, or BZA. This variance request was heard at the March 27th BZA public hearing. The item was deferred to the April 24th BZA meeting to allow the applicant to consider alternative configurations for the accessory dwelling unit and associated parking area. Should Planning Commission approve this request, staff has proposed several conditions to ensure that the development minimizes impacts to water quality. To my knowledge, the Planning Department has not received any public comments regarding this application. This concludes my presentation. I will now stand by for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Malzone. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner G.
Thank you. So, just for clarity, if we were to approve this, it would still be contingent on BZA's approval of the modifications?
So not this. So what this approval is for is specifically the garage, and BZA's approval is specifically for the accessory dwelling unit. Once this is approved by Planning Commission, the garage won't have to go to BZA.
Okay.
Commissioner Coleman?
Hi.
Hello.
I just have a question. So Planning is requesting approval with the conditions?
Yes, but we are recommending a single-car garage over a double-car garage, just to be the minimum necessary to afford relief. To determine what that is, we're deciding to go with the zoning ordinance's minimum parking requirements for single-family dwellings, which is two spaces.
Okay. So I guess what makes this different? It seems like the last couple of variances that we've done for the CBE, it's been recommended not to approve. And I guess that's because... What I want to make sure is, if somebody comes with, like, a 20-by-20 garage, and that's what they want, and we say, "No, we'll approve it for a 10-by-10," but if somebody says, "I want a 10-by-10, so I'm going to ask for a 20-by-20," and then if I work with the city and say, "Oh, I'll go for a 10-by-10," then you'll approve it. I just want to make sure that that... That it doesn't get out that if you ask for more than what you want and you work with the city, you end up getting what you want in the first place.
Right. I understand.
Yeah, so it just seems like the last couple, you know, that we've not recommended, you know, because it's too big and they're, you know, they're not willing to go down, but say that, you know what I'm saying? I just don't want to get that reputation that as long as you say you're going to work for the city, just ask for more than you want, and then you end up getting what you want.
Right, definitely.
So I just want to make sure that that's, you know...
Yeah, so kind of why this is different in our eyes is because the shed from the last meeting was because he had already had a shed, and we didn't want to approve duplicate structures. If you can replace an existing structure and make it slightly larger... So for this one, it was based upon the fact that there was no other parking in existence on this property. There is what shows to be an existing concrete driveway to the northwest. Northwest.
Yeah, that's a big garage. It's almost like the house.
Yeah, it's really big, but that existing concrete driveway, we decided not to consider that as parking because it's not really usable. It's very broken up and dilapidated, and he's planning on getting rid of it. So if there was other parking, we would have most likely recommended denial. It's just because there was no parking. We also would normally work with them to move it westward and south to be further out of the Resource Protection Area, but we did want to allow, like, a usable backyard area. So this one was tough, but I understand what you're saying, and I would like to think that if somebody, you know, came to us with a smaller, we would consider it in the same way, and we're not just trying to reduce everybody's requests.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jiggs?
And this has to do... This is 23, yes, 21.
Okay.
And the affidavit notice to property owners is dated December 12th of 2023. Were we not required to do an updated notice to the adjacent property owners?
So we're not...
I have another question for the attorney. I don't know.
Okay, so it's my understanding that we left the public hearing open in December, and therefore we do not need to re-advertise it each time, but I can also defer to the city attorney.
For the adjacent property owners. I'm not talking about just advertising just to...
Oh, yeah, that's included, yes, if you leave the public hearing open. Is that correct?
Does that satisfy the city attorney's...
Yes.
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
I said that's generally how that works.
I still didn't hear you.
That is generally how the public hearings work.
So not so much the public hearing, but the notice, because it was deferred. So just common sense to me says, well, it was deferred, so therefore a new notice needs to go out. So you're saying that's not required?
No, not in this case. So it was adjacent property owner notices were sent out in November, and at that time we had closed the public hearing in November. So for the December meeting, that's why new adjacent property owner notices came out in December. But then when we found that we'd have to keep deferring it, we left the public hearing open, which those adjacent property owner notices now don't need to be sent out as long as it stays open.
Even if there have been some additional adjacent property owners? I'm just asking.
I'm not sure if there would be additional adjacent property owners. You mean if a new person bought a property?
I mean, that could happen. I'm just, you know, I'm just wondering.
I'm not familiar with that.
I guess, that's a great point. I wonder, is there a standard by which? Because we've extended this, what, five months now?
It's been extended for...
At what point does that become relevant, the time consideration of re-advertising?
I would... I'm not sure of the legal implications of that, but I would think that once we receive the TIA and have a complete application, then we can opt to re... Or to re-advertise and send adjacent property owner notices because of that extended time that has passed, as well as the fact that there's new information that will actually result in the application being heard. So we can always opt to send out adjacent property owner notices. In this case, it was not required, and we chose not to do that.
You're saying state law does not require you to re-notify adjacent property owners, even if there have been a change and there are additional adjacent property owners? I just want to be clear.
Oh, so in that aspect, I don't... I'm not sure that the state code covers that. It's like if there's new owners that have purchased property.
The requirement is the owners of record, as it's reported in the Commissioner of Revenue, and that's usually updated only once annually. Having said that, the cost to send out an adjacent property owner notice update is nominal, and we can commit to doing that. I'm not sure I'd want to commit to re-advertising because those costs are really high. I mean, I was told it's like $1,800 a meeting, so... But we're happy to send the notices out once the TIA is complete, and we know that it will be heard by the Planning Commission. We're happy to send those out again.
Well, you know, I just... It's not that. I mean, just to notify the adjacent property owners of record, and if it's only stationary of record when the process begins, that's, you know, that's what it is. I'm just asking from a perspective of being a citizen, if something... If I move into a neighborhood or whatever, or a commercial property or whatever, and I'm, like, coming in after the initial notification, I just want to know if the additional property owners are... If we're required by law that we must notify them. If it's not required by law, then, you know, that's what it is. I just want to, you know, just have the clarification. That's it.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it. So if you can just maybe...
Yeah, I don't believe that's the case. I'll confirm, but I'm pretty...
It doesn't speak to if you have additional property owners to come on.
Right, well, because what you're talking about is if somebody sells their property, and there's a new owner that comes in, as opposed to...
Well, it could be they sold their property or just some additional purchases, owners come on.
Right, right. So that would result because somebody sold property, and that would have to go through the land records, and I am not aware of any requirement that says that you have to recheck land records if something's been deferred.
I think it's something valid, worthy of maybe investigating, just to make sure that the city is protected and we cover all our bases. I mean, if people can move in and out of a neighborhood, and you only have to deal with the neighbors' adjacent property owners of record when the process starts, okay. But if that's not the case, I mean, you have to include the additional adjacent property owners because this is unique, because it's been deferred and deferred and deferred. I think we will want to know that.
I can confirm that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions? No? Okay. Ms. Russell?
Commissioners, our third agenda item is the proposed street name change request. Chairman, I... We do have a question about the process for the name change request.
Sure.
Would you prefer that we address that after the staff presentation or before?
Let's do it after the staff presentation. Please.
Mr. Brian Swetz is going to present this agenda item.
Okay, so this is SNC 2401. Barry Randall Jenkins has requested a permanent street name change of TCC Drive to Senator L. Louise Lucas Drive. The street is located in the Entertainment Overlay District and is highlighted here in red. To give you an idea, on the ground of what it looks like this is on Victory Boulevard, looking at the casino and the street running away from you, that is TCC Drive, which is being proposed to have its name changed. It would... The street name change would incorporate this entire area outlined in red. The section where it ends on the southeastern part of the property before you get to Greenwood Drive, that has already been renamed in honor of somebody else. That's why it doesn't extend all the way to Greenwood. And we had the question about the honorary versus the permanent street name change. Some of you may remember that back in 2022, the Planning Department gave you guys a presentation on a potential policy for an honorary street name change, which would be different from the permanent street name change. The honorary would be where you'd have... Normally, you have a sign with a different color up above the street name, but that policy was never actually adopted, so it does not actually exist. So staff is recommending approval of this application because it meets the requirements for a street name as found in the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Swetz. Ms. Russell, did you want to add to that?
Yes, so Commissioner Jiggs posed a question relative to the process for street name changes and whether or not they need to be considered by the Planning Commission, and we have feedback from the city attorney's office with respect to our processes.
Right, so that's what Mr. Swetz was talking about. The proposed honorary street name change would have had a different process, but first that wasn't adopted, and even if it was, this application's not for an honorary street name change, this is for a permanent street name change. So that's why it's coming before you, but ultimately it's up to City Council. So this is just the first step in this process because, according to our code, all permits... All street name changes, and certainly all permanent street name changes, have to go to City Council, so that's for it.
I have a question.
Ms. G, let's go ahead.
Will there be any part of the area that is still going to be TC... TCC Drive or whatever?
No.
Or is that no longer in play at all?
If the street name change is approved, there will be no TCC Drive anymore at any point or place.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Swetz. Commissioners, any additional questions?
One clarifying point...
No, go ahead.
I know the applicant assumes costs for, like, street signs and stuff like that. What about... Are there... Would every cost incurred by TCC, for example, in this situation? Is that their address of record?
It... No, but I believe their address of record is Campus Drive.
Okay.
There are only two adjacent properties to this section of TCC Drive. There's the college, and there's the casino, and both those entities signed off on the application as being acceptable to them.
Sorry, that was my next question. Thank you.
Commissioners, anything else? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Swetz. Ms. Russell, do you have anything else?
I'm not under the public hearing items. We have a new business item.
Okay, new business?
Okay, so the discussion regarding changes to the agenda, we've been asked to delete that discussion.
Okay.
And so the next item, you'll recall, Chairman Paxton and Commissioners, that the Commission is required by code to be provided the information about the Board of Zoning and Deals Agenda Items, not for a required action, you're not required to make a recommendation, although if you do, you will share that information with the BZA, and then so that you're aware of the public hearing items. And so we have six agenda items that Mr. Boone will provide a summary on.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have six agenda items for our April 24th Water Zoning Appeals Meeting. The first one is a deferral item for our March meeting, V 2403, 177 Peninsula Avenue. They are requesting a variance of the zoning ordinance, Section 40.2-217, subsection I, subsection III, subsection B, subsection IV, subsection C, for the use of specific standards before the Board of Zoning Appeals, in accordance with the zoning ordinance to authorize the construction of an accessory dwelling unit to the side of the principal structure prior to pursuing a Chesapeake Bay exception. The second item that we have is SE 2408. It's 2016 Peach Street. They are... Brian McDonald is requesting a special exception before the Board of Zoning Appeals in accordance with zoning ordinance, Section 40.2-535, subsection B, subsection 13, to authorize a reduction of the required interior side yard setbacks from seven feet to three feet to construct a detached, single-family dwelling on a lot 25.21 feet in width and 100 feet in depth. The next item that we have is V 2407, 2623 Hickory Street. Gary Muhammad is requesting a variance of the zoning ordinance table, 40.2-218, subsection 1. It's area book requirements before the Board of Zoning Appeals in accordance with zoning ordinance, Section 40.2-534, subsection B, subsection 2, to authorize a reduction of the required corner and side yard setback from 10 feet to three feet, and a reduction of the required real yard setback from 25 feet to 23 feet to construct a single-family dwelling on a lot 25 feet in width and 100 feet in depth. Next item is SE 2409, 2623 Hickory Street. Again, Gary Muhammad is requesting a special exception before the Board of Zoning Appeals in accordance with zoning ordinance, Section 40.2-535, subsection B, subsection 13, to authorize a reduction of the required interior side yard setback from seven feet to three feet to construct a detached, single-family dwelling on a lot 25 feet in width and 100 feet in depth. Our next item is 2503 Azalea Avenue. Kenny Bullock with KNK Builders is requesting a special exception before the Board of Zoning Appeals in accordance with zoning ordinance, Section 40.2-535, subsection B, subsection 13, to authorize a reduction of the required interior yard setback from seven feet to three feet in order to construct a single-family dwelling on a lot 25 feet in width and 100 feet in depth. And our final item is SE 2411. It's 400 Broad Street LLC is requesting a special exception to the Board of Zoning Appeals to authorize a non-conforming use that has been abandoned and to authorize a modification of parking requirements in accordance with zoning ordinance, Section 40.2-535, subsection B, subsection 9, and Section 40.2-535, subsection B, subsection 5, respectfully. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Commissioners, any questions? No?
All right.
Thank you. Ms. Russell?
Ms. Paxton, members of the Commission, we have completed our work session agenda items, and so we have approximately 30 minutes...
Okay.
Before our regular...
Thank you, Commissioners. Anything else before we adjourn? No? Okay. Then this meeting is concluded, and we'll see everyone back in the City Council chambers at 1:30. Thank you. Mm-hmm. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, April the 2nd, 2024, in the City of Portsmouth City Council Chambers. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Five members of the Planning Commission are present.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the March 5th, 2024, public hearing, if there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion.
We need a motion.
We need a motion, please.
I move for acceptance of the March 2024 minutes.
Okay.
A second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the March 5th, 2024, public hearing, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved, 5 to 0. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, May the 7th, 2024, at 12:30 PM, City Council Chamber, City Council Conference Room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 PM, City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their May the 14th, 2024, public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time if you have not already done so. Our first item is deferred from the February Planning Commission meeting, UP-23-21, Hattonsville. Leaf Burner requests a use permit to operate a shipping container chassis storage yard on an approximately 5.4-acre parcel at 1315 Airline Boulevard in the Light Industrial Zoning District. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as a mixed-use corridor. The property is owned by Burner Properties, 1315 Airline LLC, and is further described as tax map 574, parcel 3. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. This application is deferred for 60 days, which will be heard at our June the 4th, 2024, public hearing. at our June the 4th, 2024 public hearing. Our next item. Oh, pardon me, we need to vote.
Yes, commissioners, we need a motion and a second to defer UP-23-21 to June 4th, 2024.
I saw move.
Second.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second to defer to our June the 4th Planning Commission meeting, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved to be deferred by a vote of 5 to 0. Our next item, CBE-24-02 West Park View. Trenton Walker requests a Chesapeake Bay exception to construct a detached garage within the 100-foot buffer of the Resource Protection Area at 177 Peninsula Avenue in the Urban Residential UR Zoning District. The property is owned by Trenton Walker and Elisa Williamson, and is further described as Tax Map 52, Parcel 43. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for high-density, single-family residential uses. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time? There is no applicant.
Do we want to vote? We need to ask the city attorney.
Since the applicant does not appear to be here, how should we proceed? I, we can't hear you.
You can defer it if you'd like.
Okay.
You can still vote on this if you don't feel like you need to hear from the applicant, but generally speaking, when this happens for the first time, people defer it.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay. Commissioners, I need a motion and a second to defer CBE-24-02 for 30 days.
I move for deferral of CBE-24-02 for 30 days.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Ms. Russell, what is 30 days from now?
May the 2nd.
The next, May the 2nd?
2nd.
7th? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to defer for 30 days, which will make it May 7th, 2024. Madam Secretary.
We have a motion and a second to defer CBE-24-02 to our May the 7th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, and you will be voting electronically.
Huh?
Did we have a public hearing?
Do we keep the public hearing open?
Well, no. We're just, I didn't do a public hearing allow.
Do you want to do?
I think we're supposed to, because it was average time. Sorry.
It's okay. Since we did not open it for a public hearing.
We need to do a public hearing.
Before we voted.
Yes, you can open the public hearing to then avoid having to go through that process again.
Okay, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE-24-02. I have no registered speakers. If there's someone here who would like to address this application, you may come forward. You will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, we will keep this public hearing open for 30 days until our May the 7th, 2024 public hearing. We need, we've already made a motion and a second to defer this item until our May the 7th, so you will be voting electronically. This item is approved for the deferral by a vote of 4 to 1. Our next item, SNC-24-01 Victory Village. Barry Randall Jenkins of 2936 Berkeley Avenue requests a permanent street name change for TCC Drive from its current designation to the name Senator L. Louise Lucas Drive in recognition of L. Louise Lucas, the state senator from Portsmouth. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property as transportation. The property is public right-of-way owned by the City of Portsmouth. Well, the staff coordinator is Valerie, is Brian Swetts. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Okay.
Doesn't appear we have our applicant. We will open the public hearing, ladies and gentlemen. This is a public hearing on item SNC-24-01. If there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, we will continue to hold open the public hearing on this item SNC-24-01, and we are in need of a motion.
To defer.
Madam Chair, point of clarity. On this one, this one's a little different, being that we did receive information from the adjoining properties, as well as, I don't know if there's many action items. Plus, this one ultimately is going to be decided by the city council. Just as a point of clarity, what is our role, being that the city council does ultimately approve it? Are we approving for informational purposes? Or is there actual planning repercussion of this item?
Your role here is advisory to the city council, essentially, so. It's just if you'd advise them to approve or deny.
Yeah, so, and my, my point in asking that is I don't know if we even need to defer this one, because there isn't many action items, there's no, there's no, no changes we're asking to be made.
Correct.
So I would love to see this one be cleared from our agenda, honestly.
Okay. Okay, with that, you can make a motion.
Perfect, so I would like to move for acceptance of SNC-24-01.
I second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we have a first and a second.
Have a motion and a second to approve SNC-24-01, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of 5 to 0.
Excuse me, sorry, commissioners. I was just informed by Ms. Chop a few minutes ago that the applicant for the previous application is about 10 minutes out. If you were all willing to sit and wait for him, you could move, you could wait and see if he actually gets here. You could move to reconsider the deferral and hear it today if you'd like, but you do not, that is up to you.
Commissioners.
Yeah. He, apparently he thought it was going to be at the BZA hearing, and so he got the time wrong.
Okay.
Which applicant are we speaking of?
Trenton Walker. He, he thought it was going to be the BZA hearing.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure today?
Excuse me, what was the explanation for the delay?
Uh, confusion in the time. Correct?
Yeah.
Yes, confusion in the time of this meeting.
And for clarity, BZA starts at what, 2 o'clock? No? Oh, starts at, okay.
Continue with the deferral.
Okay. Commissioners, how about we give this gentleman time to get here so we can take care of this applicant? Anybody opposed to that? Okay, do we need a vote? Or just recess? Commissioners, we're going to recess until 2 o'clock? 2 o'clock? Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. Commissioners, we need a motion to reconsider the deferral for CBE-24-02. And it should be someone who made the motion or seconded.
Yes, I move for reconsideration of CBE-24-02.
I second.
Okay, we, we have a motion and a second to reconsider the deferral of CBE-24-02, and you will.
Hold on, guys.
And you will be voting electronically.
Eager beavers.
Eager. The item is approved to reconsider the deferral by a vote of 5 to 0. Public hearing item, CBE-24-02 West Park View. Trenton Walker requests a Chesapeake Bay exception to construct a detached garage within the 100-foot buffer of the Resource Protection Area at 177 Peninsula Avenue in the Urban Residential UR Zoning District. The property is owned by Trenton Walker and Elisha Williamson, and is further described as Tax Map 52, Parcel 43. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for high-density, single-family residential uses. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Hello, board. Thank you for your patience. I really appreciate taking the time to hear my case with regards to 177 Peninsula Avenue. I'm still out of breath, take the stairs. Where do I start? This is an amazing piece of property. We do have a current unit there that we're looking to, you know, keep improving. We have a lot of restrictions on this lot because of the, the water line, the RPA line. The lot is amazingly big. It does hold a little water, we're aware of that. One of the things that we want to do for this particular property is create parking, a place for this single-family home to have a, a location to actually park their cars. If you look at the two streets that are in that area, they, it's almost like a single-lane street. In most cases, there's parking on both sides. You can't park directly in front of the house. You can't park directly on the side of the house at all. So when it comes to someone getting in and out of their car, it's really, it's really burdensome for, you know, the individual staying there to be able to offload and load into the house. So our solution to that was possibly go in the RPA area with minimum impact to create a parking scenario where it doesn't hinder the streets. With the small design that we have, it is for a two-car garage. Most families, family of three or family of four, there's multiple individuals in the family that own vehicles. So in this case, our request for a two-car garage is, is, um, it's one of those scenarios where it's conducive to the house. With that being noted, we did take the time to identify an appropriate amount of vegetation, so we wouldn't impact the Elizabeth River. I think I got that one right. But, um, but yeah. We request your approval with regards to developing a two-car garage to support the household there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walker. Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Jiggetts?
Yes, just for clarification, it's not the stackable garage. Is that not correct? This is side-by-side?
Side-by-side, yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner G.
So there's a couple of different recommendations made by, by the planning department. Have you had an opportunity to review those, and did you have any thoughts on that? I mean, I know one of the big ones was you are requesting a two-car, and they're suggesting a one-car, especially based on the size of the property. Did you have any thoughts on that?
So I firmly respect their recommendation. However, from a long-term perspective, that area is more conducive to more traffic. One of the last discussions we had with several of the community members was there is a huge issue with parking along those two strips. So our solution was create a space big enough for a family to be able to be, be able to get in and out, not be impacted by the traffic flows within there. So we would, we definitely want to stick with the two-car garage, if that's not a problem, because it's conducive to the space. And if you look at the size of the lot, it's, I know when it comes to an impact, it's, it's a huge amount of unused space. The limitations are astronomical for us. We're trying to do the best we can with what's available. We had an option to tear the house down and do some multifamily situations there, but we decided not to because of the, the neighborhood, the aesthetics of the neighborhood wouldn't support it for the most part. And we respect our community members as well. So we pulled back that idea, and now we're just trying to make it a single-family structure for 11 families.
So, so to that point, with it, with you looking to maintain it for a single family, are you all, I guess where my concern is coming in, it's currently, what, a two-bedroom, one-bath?
Uh, three-bedroom.
Is it, okay, three-bedroom.
Two-bath.
Okay, okay, perfect. I think what I saw had, had it listed a little differently. That does make a difference to me. I, when I saw a two-bedroom, one-bath, two-car garage, that seemed like it was.
Too much, right?
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, any questions? Okay.
Thank, well, no, I do, thank you so much. I would like the planner to come forward again, just so I can get a little bit more clarification about the garage situation.
Ms. Malzone?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jiggetts, go ahead.
I know you had indicated about the conditions, and specifically, I think I remember you stating that there is a driveway, but it's in need of serious repairs, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, I was referring to the existing concrete at the northwest corner. Yeah, it's, it's not in the condition where it can serve as a usable driveway. If there was another usable driveway on the property, we may have opted to request the denial, recommend denial based on the fact that there was already parking, but we are not taking that in consideration.
But your recommendation was still the one-car garage, is that correct?
Correct, and that's based upon the fact that with the proposed driveway in front of the garage, well, one-car garage with the driveway to the front would be the minimum recommended by the zoning ordinance, minimum off-street parking spaces for a single-family residence.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malzone. Commissioners, any additional questions? Nope. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE-24-02. I don't have any registered speakers. If there's someone here who would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there any more discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second. This is with conditions, including a modification from a double-car garage to a single-car garage.
Point of discussion, Mr. Walker, could you come back to the podium, because your logic for the wanting a two-car garage is because the house will accommodate how many? You saying it's a three-bedroom house?
Yes, ma'am.
And you saying it's got two bathrooms?
Two bathrooms, so, we just recently renovated it.
I can't hear you, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry. We just recently renovated it. Initially, it was a two, I want to say it was always a three-bedroom, it was just one bath, but now it's two baths, three-bedroom. So there's a lot more space for a complete family to be in there. Our thoughts is a, a couple with at least two or three kids. And as you know, families get bigger, you know, the parking requirements in this area are definitely, I want to say stressed out. We have, we, from the recent conversations that we've had with the community members, the biggest complaint was the amount of traffic coming down those roads, and with cars being parked on both sides. So we looked at this as a possible solution for that, especially with the sizes of family being bigger nowadays.
But there is on-street parking?
Yes, it's not directly in front of the house. It's maybe, if you see, there's a, let's see if we can go, can you go to the front of the house, person? So the parking for this particular house is really closer to that sign. There's a, because it's on a corner, there's a sign out there that says, hey, no parking from this point forward, which is kind of close to that sign, so if a family was staying there, they would actually have to park closer to that actual orange sign versus close to the house. And as you noted, that driveway to the top north of the corner of the lot is a unusable driveway, which is also maybe, I'd say, close to 75 to 100 feet away from the house as well. So our solution, you know, for a growing family would be to at least allow them enough parking spaces on the property so they could operate as a family.
Thank you for the explanation.
Mr. Walker, I have a question, if you don't mind, please. Unless the Commissioners have any additional questions. What is the square, living square footage of the property? You said it's three bedrooms, two baths.
It's about, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think it's around between 1,200 and 1,400 square feet, and it has a full, complete basement. That's not livable space. The basement is just a basement.
Above rent.
Right.
1,200? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Madam Secretary.
At this point, we're asking for a motion and a second.
Commissioners, we are in need of a motion and a second for CBE-24-02 with conditions and a modification from a two-car detached garage to a one-car detached garage. Commissioner G.
So, I'm thinking about my house, because it's almost the same dimensions. Thinking about this problem we're dealing with right now. I move for acceptance of CBE-24-02 with conditions, but without modification.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we have a first and a second without modifications.
I have a motion and a second.
Point of discussion.
Commissioner Jigots?
So you're saying you want the motion
Ms. Commissioner Jigots, would you please speak into your microphone, so we can hear you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Out of respect.
I got you.
You got me, okay. So you're saying you want the condition to be based on a two-car garage? Is that what you're saying?
So, for clarity, there's nine conditions, nine proposed conditions, which are separate from the modification to a one-car garage. I'm in favor of these nine conditions as written. The one thing that I'm not in favor of is the downsizing to a one-car garage.
That's what I just said.
Yes, just spelling it out, make sure it's clear for everyone, yes.
Yeah, yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So Commissioner G, you made the motion. Commissioner Taylor, you second. Madam Secretary, we have a first and a second.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Have a motion and a second to approve CBE-24-02 with conditions, and you will be voting
And the modification.
No modifications from the double-car garage to the single-car garage. And you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of three to two.
Madam Secretary, I believe this concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Excuse me, Commissioners, will there be any further business? No? Ms. Russell?
No.
Thank you. Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.